To talk to us about an issue that has been paramount for us over the last, basically, almost three years in terms of dealing, which is a national issue to disparate disciplines. So thanks for taking an evening to be here with us. Okay, Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, once again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. But first and foremost, I'd like to reintroduce our new interim general counsel, Susan Shear, and she is going to be joining us as we transition with our general counsel. And so for those that are new, we'd like to welcome Susan. And for those that are familiar faces, you'll be happy to know that we're in good hands for a while. Student discipline, this has been a topic that the board has wanted to spend more time discussing. So this is not your traditional monitoring report. This is meant to be a conversation. We have about twenty, twenty-five minutes of data and action steps. We've invited three different schools that we have been working with to learn from about what are good evidence-based practices that are changing the results in our schools. And the desire there is to learn from these schools and then replicate those practices across the district. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Ms. Pace, and she is going to walk us through the team and the presentation, and then there will be plenty of time for questions and answers.
So I think one of the ways we could do this, we have a large group here, and we don't usually have that many, this many people, but I think as they get to the, we get to the place of when they're presenting, we can talk about who they are, and that'll make more sense when, when we start to look at their data. So let's get started with our presentation and thank Dr. Garcia for his opening remarks. I think he covered it very well. We're here to talk about student discipline and review of the data and trends.
So, real quickly, for those that may have seen the presentation at home, and then you'll see that the format has changed a little bit. So we learned, we got some feedback from folks in the field, from the board. The data hasn't changed, but some of the format and the presentation, so that there is some consistency of what we heard from your feedback from last week, and then what we're working towards next week. And so, once again, for those that were looking at the data, the data hasn't changed, but there is some format, some additional title transitions to help explain for those that are not here with the conversation.
So we're just starting out with our district student demographics as, as a way to kind of introduce us. You'll see this on various slides throughout the course of this presentation. And what I will tell you is kind of how we split up this, this presentation. We have an overview of sort of the secondary piece that Doug Hostetter is going to lead us through. We have some, some kind of testimony, I guess you could say, from some of our secondary principals. And then we're going to move into the whole child initiative, and we have Dr. Greg Benner, who will lead us in that conversation, and we'll talk a little bit more about his role in that arena when he gets to his, his part. And then we have an elementary principal, Anita Roth, who's going to provide some, some specific data in her school that will show us how things are working. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Doug Hostetter.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, board. Glad to be here this evening. I'm going to start with this slide, which you can see is difficult to see. I wish my pointer worked, but this color pointer doesn't work on the screen. But what I'll draw your, your eye to first is the term "without" at the top. So these are students without suspensions or expulsions in grade nine and grade twelve in the district. You can see the goal for the district is ninety-two percent for ninth grade not having suspensions. Remember the key words, "without suspensions," and ninety-four percent for grade twelve. Also, if I could ask you to look at this graph and read it from the bottom to the top. And so you can see in two thousand and twelve, the dark orange line represents ninth grade. Eighty point nine percent in two thousand and twelve were not suspended. And if you find that linear progression up on those dark yellow lines up to two thousand and sixteen, ninety point six percent of our ninth graders are not being suspended. The light orange line represents twelfth grade, and it's not as, as linear as the ninth grade data. But when you look down at the bottom at two thousand and twelve, ninety-three point two percent of twelfth graders were not suspended. And last year in two thousand and sixteen, almost ninety-five or ninety-four point six percent of twelfth graders were not suspended. The next slide, I want to, the next slide, did I change it? There it goes. The next slide is just the opposite. So I want to draw your eye to the word "with" at the top. So these are students with suspensions. You can see that the goal for ninth grade, the slide says eight percent, but that should be ninety-two percent is the goal for ninth grade. Excuse me, no, that's right. So ninety-two minus, a hundred minus ninety-two is eight. So eight percent for ninth, eighth, ninth grade and six percent for twelfth grade. So again, if we look at the graph from bottom to the top, you can see the dark orange bar is ninth grade. Nineteen point one percent of our ninth graders did have behaviors that resulted in suspension or expulsion. And you follow the linear progression to two thousand and sixteen, nine point four percent of our students were suspended in ninth grade. So that's a positive trend. And there's the twelfth grade, again, not quite as linear, but the decrease went from six point eight percent of students with suspensions and expulsions to five point four. And you'll see the, well, that'll get to another slide, but the five point four actually meets our twelfth grade goal of six percent. This slide, again, very busy. I know you have in front of you, it's probably the best to look there rather than on the screen. Again, reading from the bottom to the top, in two thousand and fifteen, I'll just take, I'll, I'll use three examples just to draw your eye to those, and I'll use the demographics on the right kind of to guide which subgroup I choose. So I'll start with the top where it says white students. So if we look in two thousand and fifteen at our suspensions, students without suspensions in two thousand and fifteen, and I focus on the white student category, which is the very bottom of two thousand and fifteen, ninth graders, ninety-one point nine percent of them were without suspensions in two thousand and fifteen. Going up to two thousand and sixteen for white students, ninety-three point two percent of those students were without suspensions. So the number's in a, in a favorable direction. Going to the next subgroup that's listed on the gray bar in the right are our black students. In two thousand and fifteen, looking at our ninth graders, the dark orange, eighty-two point four percent of our black students were without suspensions. And in two thousand and sixteen, eighty-five point two percent of our black students were that, were without suspensions. So again, in a positive trend. And our Hispanic students in two thousand and fifteen, eighty-eight point one percent were without suspensions. And in two thousand and sixteen, ninety point five percent were without suspensions. And so I'm just focusing on the ninth grade bar, but you can see this, a similar trend with the twelfth grade bar as well.
So obviously, we want to reduce suspensions in students out of time. That's not always possible. Our first and primary responsibility is to ensure that the students are safe as individuals, the school is safe, staff are safe. And so sometimes that, that happens. We are examining why they're being suspended. But inside of that, we also want to reduce the overall, but we want to eliminate the disparity amongst different groups. And so in this example that Doug, Doug Hostetter just gave, is we gave three different examples. And although all three are having fewer suspensions overall, we see in the Hispanic and black that the gap is actually closing in disparities as well in ninth grade students. That's not the case everywhere, but we're seeing examples of that taking place. And for just transparency, we know that there's a lot of data on there, but we want to show the gaps and be transparent about the gaps. And so that's why all the different subcategories are on that, that chart.
Correct. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. The next slide, again, is the, is similar data, looking at it from a different slant. These are students with behaviors resulting in suspensions, where the previous slides were students without. And so if you look at two thousand and fifteen, and you look at the white students, eight point four percent had behaviors that resulted in suspension or expulsion. In two thousand and sixteen, it went down to six point eight. Black students, seventeen point six percent, and again, I'm focusing on the ninth grade, seventeen point six percent of black students were with suspensions or expulsions. And that's went down to fourteen point eight last year. And our Hispanic students, eleven point nine percent in two thousand and fifteen, down to nine point five percent in two thousand and sixteen. And again, you can see a similar trend for our twelfth grade students as well, the light orange line. So interpretation of data. First off, we can see that our ninth grade students being suspended or expelled from school is steadily decreasing, a nice linear trend. It's decreased nearly ten percent over the past five years. Our twelfth grade students being suspended or expelled from school has also decreased. The district goal for two thousand and eighteen of sixty, six percent suspension rate has been met because in two thousand and sixteen, the rate was five point four percent. And will hopefully continue that, that decline to get even further below six percent. With one exception, when comparing two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, suspension rates for each ethnic group has decreased. And the one exception was our Pacific Islander ninth grade group. The challenge, as Dr. Garcia was getting at in his earlier comments, although the rates of nearly all ethnic subgroups has decreased, generally, students who are not classified as white or Asian are being suspended at a higher rate than their Asian or white peers. So some of our school initiatives. We have the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, which Dr. Ben, Bender will go over a lot more with you a little later. And our schools that I've, that we've invited here this evening, we'll give you more details on in just a bit. But Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, I think we're very familiar with, familiar with that. We also have the Early Warning Indicator System. It's a system, it kind of, when you, when you hear early warning, you're thinking storms or, you know, tornadoes or something. And it's an early warning indicator. We want a, an indicator of when we should really pay special attention to our students who are showing attendance problems, behavior problems, or course performance issues. And so it's a tracking, so we identify those students as quick as we can. And OSPI gave us a grant, we applied for a grant, and they, we were awarded the grant to support staff with their work at, working with students and their families to try to determine intervention plans to help them with either their attendance, their behavior, or their course performance. Because research clearly says it's, that these three are, are indicators of a student's future performance and including graduation. So we want to get to them as early as we can, and we began it at the high school level at the ninth grade. Academic Extension Program. We began this program during the fifteen, sixteen school year. And what it is, it's a program that serves as an alternative to student long-term suspension. So the program has offered to students the ability to maintain their academic progress. Students met with teachers two evenings a week, and we housed at the Willie Stewart Academy on Tuesdays and Thursdays last year. And by meeting with these teachers, the suspended students were able to maintain their academic progress. So when they went back to school, they were caught up and they could hit the ground running like they weren't there in the first, in, didn't miss much school at all. Now, of course, being in an environment that's different than the environment of the teacher isn't identical, but it's an, it's a way for us to maintain and hopefully minimize the, the gaps that the student might have if he was out of school without any support at all. We served high school students, students last year. This year, we're expanding it to include middle, middle school students. And so in order to have more capacity, that program will be run Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at the Willie Stewart Academy this school year. Future Goals. Continue to expand the implementation of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative in our schools. Continue to implement social justice practices, which you'll get a lot more information from our guests from Mount Tahoma and First Creek this evening. Continue and expand TPS's academic extension program as an alternative to long-term suspension. Continue to improve instruction in our classrooms. Because we are very well aware that students who are challenged with rigor and are engaged are less likely to act out in class and become subjected to disciplinary measures. And continue to examine our student discipline data like we have this evening in order to inform our practice. So as an introduction to what our guests will be talking about, kind of an old way of thinking on the slide, you can see if it's, if a child can't read, we teach him to read. If a child can't do math problems, we teach him how to do math problems. If a child doesn't know how to behave, we punish them. And so that gives you pause, a pause, like there's something wrong there, which leads to restorative justice practices. And so the next slide, you can see, talks about, on the left column, some of the traditional discipline that you might find at a school. And I'm not going to go through them all, but let's, let's just look at the third one down. Accountability equals punishment in the old traditional discipline system, whereas accountability equals understanding impact and repairing harm in the restorative justice way of dealing with student discipline.
There's, in that, that old school thinking, there's a, a cultural biased statement in there, which basically says, if a child doesn't know how to behave, so there's an interpretation on there of, my definition of behave is the same as all, everybody else's. And one of the things that I don't want to be missed, and you'll hear more about this in the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, and really the work that Mr. Howard and Justin at their schools, they have to start with, are we clear as a community about what behave looks like? Do we have a joint ownership of what that definition is? And that's oftentimes not seen in reports. But that's the first step, to really challenge that cultural bias that says, because you don't behave the way I like, that somehow you're acting up. And I may not have even communicated my definition of behave, or let alone understood what your definition of behave is. And so many of you, as parents, you know this, right? You know, just sit, I had the same conversation with my son this morning, just do as I tell you. I don't want to talk about it. We're having to challenge those same assumptions inside the school systems and our schools, and we have great leadership that's doing that, leading that courageous conversation amongst staff, that, let's start by looking at our definition of what behave looks like.
Thank you. The next slide, just again, some of the questions that a student might be asked in a restorative justice system. Asking the students, what happened? What were you thinking? Again, getting the student to reflect on their behavior and come up with alternative ways to behave if they were presented that same situation in the future. And, you know, the restorative questions, what do you think you need to do to make things So the next slide is dealing with Mount Tahoma and their restorative justice work last school year. And so I'm going to introduce the principal for Mount Tahoma, Kevin Kinnear, and an assistant principal at Mount Tahoma, Justin Mayer, who will talk about what they've done at Mount Tahoma. And then they'll introduce Tammy Larson and Levante Howard from First Creek.
Good evening, board and guests. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're pretty passionate about what, what we're going to talk about, so we are, as I said, very, very pleased. Four years ago, the staff at Mount Tahoma High School felt that we should be doing something to deal with student behavior and the suspension rate. And so after a couple of teams were sent to other schools in the Puget Sound area that were operating a positive behavior support system in their schools, the staff came back, the teams came back, formed a leadership team. And then three years ago, in working with Greg at, at UW-T, we were the first, and then until this year, the only high school that decided to move forward with developing and implementing a positive behavior support system. That has now obviously become the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative as, as it has expanded. But one of the things that we knew we had to do was deal with suspensions. If we want failure rates to go down, if we want graduation rates to go up, we have to have the kids in school. And there's a really interesting article that came out eight days ago about restorative justice in the New York Times Magazine. And the author of that article does give a couple of really good reasons why suspensions just don't work. Some quotes from that article are, "Suspensions do not deter bad behavior. Numerous studies have found and most likely feel that it alienates students from the school community. Other studies show that suspensions are not just ineffective, but as Dr. Garcia mentioned, inequitable, as students of color are more likely than white ones to be suspended for the same behaviors. In addition, studies also show that a student who has been suspended is more likely to eventually drop out of school or end up in the criminal justice system." So dealing with suspensions became a very high priority at Mount Tahoma. Working in the Whole Child Initiative for the first two years, as we reviewed the data, it was really clear that our suspensions were going down, our disciplinary referrals were going down, but there was something that was still just not quite right. And so we began to look real carefully at the data. And the second year of being involved in the Whole Child Initiative, one of the most striking pieces of data that we recognized was regarding suspensions of African-American males. In that particular school year, the population, the percentage of African-American males in the student population at Mount Tahoma was twelve point five percent. The percentage of discipline and suspensions for African-American males was thirty-one point eight eight percent. In other words, that's almost twenty percent higher. So we recognized right away that, yes, we're doing good work, but we have a couple more targets out there that we have to, have to develop some, some systems to meet their needs. At that time, Dr. Garcia had also started working with the assistant principals in the district and asked them to engage in a particular project of their choosing. And one of my assistant principals, who's already been introduced, Justin Mayer, decided that he wanted to really take a, a good look at trying some different things with that, this particular target group to see if we could continue to improve behavior at the school and reduce suspensions. Since it was Justin's project, I'm going to let him go ahead and describe it.
Nice to meet everybody. I'll, I'll try and be a little bit quick here. So my name's Justin Mayer, I'm in charge of tenth grade assistant, I'm a tenth grade assistant principal. So as you can kind of see here on this, actually, if you can go back, Doug, I'm going to talk quickly about this. So two years ago, when I first came to Mount Toma, I was just doing what that column is, kind of traditional responses to discipline, right? Just kind of doing everything by the book. And then last, you know, last fall, we started to kind of look at different approaches. One of the main ones was when students were posturing or getting into near fights, you know, two years ago, those kids were being automatically suspended for, for that, for disrupting the school environment. And then last fall, we decided there's got to be a better way. I mean, what are they really learning by just suspending them? So at this point, we started to have more mediations with the students, contacting parents. Parents can discipline far better than I can at, at school, right? So just kind of getting the parents on board was a positive phone call with the parents, and then actually doing the mediation with the other students and restoring the harm that was broken. I think the main, the most important part about the restorative justice piece is that we're restoring that, that broken relationship between the students. Because if we just suspend them, and we don't really have that conflict resolution or that mediation, when they come back a few days later, who's to say they're not going to fight again, right? So it's really important to do these mediations. Also, kind of my big epiphany other than that first one was a kid who was struggling the first semester last year, barely passed any of his classes. And then it was February, and his teachers came down and just started telling me, what's, what's with, we'll call him Justin, what's with Justin? He's doing his homework now, he's, he's kind of turned into leaf. Well, I, I happened to catch him and another kid off campus, and I could smell marijuana, so I brought him and I searched him, and he had a little bit of marijuana on him. And then, so my decision is, what's best for this kid? Do I do the, the usual, EE the kid and have him come back five days later and miss a week of school? Or do I say, you know, get your drug and alcohol assessment, you know, tonight? You know, come down tomorrow morning with your mom, and we'll talk this out, and you can go back to school, assuming you, you give me some good answers here. And, and so that was kind of my big epiphany is, let's kind of look at some things differently to, to help reduce our suspensions. I'm not going to go through the rest, but those are kind of the stories, anecdotal stories I have. So the next one here, so again, I'm in charge of tenth grade, so I, and this was my, my project for Dr. Garcia, so I have probably a lot more specific data than, say, maybe the other assistant principals. But as you can see here, just by doing these approaches, we reduced the suspension for all 10th grade students, sixty-six percent in just in one year. And a lot of that had to do with getting rid of, whenever a kid was tardy for more than 10 times, we would suspend the kids, which seems kind of counterintuitive, right? So the kid's tardy, and now we're going to suspend him because he hit his 10th tardy. So we, we got rid of that. Again, the posturing, you know, just because a kid postures doesn't mean they should be suspended, let's work it out. And some of the other things that we've done as well, kind of reduced that quite a bit there. And the reason I showed the, the African-American subgroup is, with my project with Dr. Garcia, looking at the data, again, the disparity was, it was, again, it was about over thirty percent, even though they only made up 10 percent of the 10th grade population. And so another, another quick step I did with, with this group of kids is I took my, so I, I was in charge of 40 African-American males. I started with any kid who was below a 2.5, and I started doing the same, the, the Twiki, we call it, looking at failure rates, attendance, and discipline. And from that, I would call these kids down, introduce myself, you know, talk with them. I'd be proactive and call parents up and just kind of say, hey, I'm in charge of 10th grade, just want to know if there's anything I should know about your kid to help him have a successful year, and just trying to build those relationships. And then I think you can kind of see it, at least from my point of view, it looks like it kind of worked pretty well, right? So we, the total number of days African-American students were suspended two years ago compared to last year was dropped by forty-one percent. And then the total number of incidences by African-American males, again, dropped fifty-seven percent in one year, just from doing a lot of these kind of simple approaches, so.
Tammy, you want to pass this down?
Oh, I've got to talk in the microphone and do that at the same time. So many rigorous tasks tonight, including to summarize our very hard work in two minutes. So we, we are going to have a growth mindset, though, and we're going to do this in two minutes. I promise, Ms. Pace. So Levante and I were asked to come and share our suspension decreases, and so we are honored to do that today. We kind of took it, when we first came to First Creek Middle School two years ago, in a two-prong approach. One, very narrowly focused on instructional strategies in the classroom, because we believe instruction matters most, not just for achievement, but also for behavior and discipline. So we initiated very clear structures and expectations around common language and common practices. And so I'm not going to read all those to you because I have two minutes, but you can see some of those there. And if you have questions, I think there's going to be an opportunity for that. And then our second-prong approach was around specific interventions and strategies to support and plan for kids who need above and beyond what our school-wide systems provide. And so Levante's going to talk a little bit about that.
All right. So Levante Howard, thanks for having me, one of the assistant principals at First Creek. So I, I think our work kind of started our first year, and what, you know, and what that looked like was, we kind of determined, I kind of sat down, we didn't know any of the kids, and part of not suspending kids is having positive relationships with them. So as we got through that first year, when we got to January, I decided, I was like, what, we need to sit down together and figure out who are the top kids that we're dealing with on a consistent basis. And, you know, matched them up with people that would check and connect with them, calling down similar to what Mount Toma was doing with, kind of checking with them and, and setting them up for success. And we did that and realized with those 15 kids or so that their suspensions went to zero. So then that work kind of progressed to the next year, last year, and we kind of went more school-wide and more kids and embraced that. And we were able to look at kind of our, our data, if you can see it up there. Our first, last year, or the year before last, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, in September, we had nine suspensions. And as you can see, fifteen, sixteen, we, we didn't have any in September. So we went from having suspensions overall of two hundred and So we went from having suspensions overall of 254 out-of-school suspensions to 116, which is a 54% reduction, as you can see there in bold red. So again, very similar to Mount Toma in regards to meeting and checking with the kids. And the big part is, as I've stated to staff all the time, suspensions work for kids that don't get suspended. So, and I got suspended a lot and it didn't help me, so I just, you know, I'm an example, I'm proof of that, so.
Well, you're pretty successful.
Yes, well, now, it took some time. But it's very, and the other piece that we do is, I don't know who's single out there and you go on the dating websites, like the appropriate ones, like match.com or anything. But what we try to, what we try to do is, we try to match the kids up. We hand-schedule of kids of concern and with teachers that we know they'll be successful with, based on personality. So we don't want a kid with a teacher that's super militant, that doesn't respond well to that type of, you know, talk or demeanor or body language. So we do some matching and we hand-schedule a variety of kids of concern and that helps us as well, so, you know, that's it.
Thank you. So now we're gonna move into the, kind of the Whole Child piece to this. And I want to introduce to you again Dr. Greg Benner, who really, I don't know, you sort of became part of the family. You know, I think we just kind of see you as part of Tacoma Public Schools. But his title is Professor and Executive Director for the Center for Strong Schools at the University of Washington Tacoma. And tonight, Jen Cubista, Dr. Jen Cubista was unable to be here. And so we're very delighted that Dr. Greg Benner can come and kind of talk a little bit about his partnership with us and what we've been able to accomplish through the Whole Child Initiative. So you're on. And you will introduce Ms. Roth when you're done.
All right, thank you all very much. Can I have the clicker too? No? Yeah. A whole child raises the village. Did you all know that? So I know we hear the reverse of that a lot, don't we? But the whole child raises the village. And what we've heard tonight is our amazing stories of how when we provide supports, Whole Child supports, these youth raise up the whole village. And what do I mean by that? Climate improves, safety of the school improves, teacher stress drops, engagement goes up in classrooms, kids' lives blossom, their potential blossoms. We see the good in them, the assets in them. And so I just want to just pause and recognize that, that in these youth, 60% of these Tacoma youth stay right here in Tacoma. So not only do they raise the village within their schools, but they also raise up Tacoma and they make Tacoma better. And that's a beautiful thing. So I'm gonna walk through just a little bit, and I have only like four minutes, something like that, so I'll go fast. What you see in front of you, we have four groups of cohort schools. Cohort one began implementation of Tacoma Whole Child Initiative practices in fall of 2013. Cohort two, and you see the list of schools there, began implementation of Whole Child practices in fall of 2014. Cohort three began implementation in 2015. And our most recent cohort, cohort four, are just starting implementation. And you can see there's schools that aren't yet on this list and there are schools that are doing amazing things that already that aren't on this list. But our goal is that we will be implementing Whole Child practices district-wide and then permeating these same practices out to all 455 or so community programs across the city, every neighborhood. And ambitiously too, we would love to see, link arms with families and see these same practices move into homes and become a city that's a Whole Child city. But moving forward, just some examples briefly of how things have changed in the schools. So we see on the slide ahead of you, what are we, what type of restorative justice practices have we been using? You can see that the student conferences, for example, have doubled since, more than doubled since 2014. On the right-hand side, another restorative justice practice or an alternative to suspension, phone parent guardian has nearly tripled, as you can see there, from 2014. Another example here on the left side, you see parent conferences, going from 60 to 133 in 2014 up to 2016. Parent-student conferences, and we heard examples of those just a moment ago, have also more than tripled there, as you can see. So these are now becoming part of the culture of our schools. They're becoming a new normal, if you will, as opposed to zero tolerance punishment-based programs. And that's a beautiful thing. Now we can bring out the best, not only in the kids, but in each other as well and build emotional intelligence in ourselves and others. So warnings, 47, 2014, 2016, you can see 205 across there. And then acquiring apology, that's a great way to learn from mistakes, is apologize, make it right. Also, we see a lot of schools now moving to apologies of action. So a way to apologize might be, for example, having, a student may say, well, I'd like, I'd like this, you know, this student to sit by me during lunch. That's a way they can apologize to me for getting in a fight with me. And so what a beautiful way to say sorry is do an apology of action. Isn't that beautiful? So we see a lot of these practices, again, permeating out to our schools. So what you see in front of you right here are referrals per day, per month in 2014. And then 2016, right here. And you can see the trends here across the board. And these are broken out by months, August through June there, as you can tell, 2014, 2016. What I want to point out with this slide, the next slide here, this is referrals per day, per month with cohort one schools. Remember the list of cohort one schools that began implementation in 2013? So it's interesting to look back at office discipline referrals in 2014. And this is again broken out by month, September on the far left, all the way over to June. And if we look at this and compare with office referrals per day, per month in 2016, you can see the drops. For example, just looking at, for example, May of 2014, we're at about 7.82. And then May in 2016, you see that we're at 1.44. So substantive drops across months from 2014 to 2016 in our cohort one schools. It's exciting to see trends like these. I want to point out briefly too, that with each office discipline referral, about 45 minutes of an administrator's time is absorbed in that, about 30 to 45 minutes of a student's time, about 15 minutes of a teacher's time. So what's not reflected here are the cost benefits in terms of human capital and time that is saved, that would have gone toward discipline, but now is going toward instruction and engagement and learning. That's powerful to bear that in mind as we see not only office referral data, but also suspension data, the time saved back. Now, this might be a little bit, this is another busy slide. But what I want to point out here is over the last four years, we've been measuring school climate in Tacoma Public Schools using a tool called the Schoolwide Evaluation Tool. And what you see here are the cohort one schools and their, how climate has improved. And what I want to point out that in the spring of 2013, the average climate score was about 53%. So 53% climate. And climate is measured across these dimensions, expectations, expectations taught, reward system, and so on. But look how it's grown, at baseline at 53%, now it's up to 94%. And that's still not perfect climate, but it just shows that using a standardized, validated tool like this, indeed, not only have we improved climate based on discipline data, but we also see climate improve based on standardized measures like this, the Schoolwide Evaluation Tool. So that's a very powerful thing. That same trend follows with our cohort two schools as well. So you can see that baseline, they were at 61% when we measured their climate and now they've moved to 92%. Still room for improvement, but that's powerful to see this occur across cohorts of schools. Cohort three, which again began last fall, not this fall, but last fall, 37% at the beginning and 87%, and that's just in one year's time, folks. So this is, it's amazing to see the rapid changes that can take place when you get a whole staff on the same page with the kids and the youth taking charge and leading change within their schools. Things can change quickly. And it's good to see these changes sustained over time. So they're not just, they're gone in a year, but instead they're sustained over time, which is also powerful. We've measured, district leadership has played a significant role in the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. We've measured district capacity, because it does, we need strong leadership to sustain these kind of changes over time and to create a system that's built to last. At baseline, using a measure called District Capacity Assessment, we were at 33% at baseline. Now we're up to about, actually, excuse me, these are across different scores. You can see that commitment, for example, has gone from 29 to 90%, systems alignment from 25 to 100%, action planning. So across these key dimensions for building capacity within a district to sustain change, on each of these areas, we are building a system in Tacoma Public Schools, building capacity to sustain these evidence-based practices over time. So what are our next steps? And I'll be brief here. And you heard some of these already. First, we're gonna scale up the use of check-in, check-out. That's about a two-and-a-half to three-month behavioral coaching system where students check in with a mentor in the morning. They get a kind of a, we call it a daily progress report tool. They check in at midday and at the end of the day with that behavior coach. Teachers kind of give students feedback on safe, respectful, responsible behaviors over the course of the day. At the end of the day, that behavior card goes home to get signed and is returned the next morning to their behavior coach. That's a great system. We're gonna scale that up. Also, we use an approach called SSGRIN, which is called Social Skills Group Intervention, that is a mental health intervention provided by Comprehensive Life Resources. A mental health therapist comes to the school and provides social skills group intervention to groups of kids for 10 weeks. And again, these skills focus on empathy, responsible decision-making, self-awareness, self-management, social-emotional learning competencies. Students that are, continue to struggle with some of those behaviors, move toward individualized, family-based mental health supports, provided again by Comprehensive Life Resources. We're working hard now to identify other mental health providers in the city to move, to increase our capacity to provide these kind of supports across all schools in the district. Restorative practices, we're gonna scale those up to all schools. Last bullet on the bottom there I want to point out is that we're gonna assess and understand student strengths and assets. We're gonna check social-emotional vital signs using validated tools three times per year because we want to see the good in the kids, measure the good in the kids. And if kids are, might be struggling, we can identify struggles quickly, provide supports earlier rather than later. So we won't have a wait-to-fail model anymore, a model that's based on prevention. So at that, at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Mary.
Mary Lyon.
Mary Lyon.
Mary Lyon, Principal Extraordinaire Anita Rock.
And thank you for that introduction.
Cohort number two, right?
Yes. So I guess I'm the warm, fuzzy part because I'm gonna tell you kind of how we do it with the babies. And I have to say that because, you know, this is the first week of kindergarten, so I have my babies all around me. It's, I can't help but think that way. So, you know, the, one of the most important parts when you're going to start looking at discipline is that you have to have a belief as a staff that it matters what kids, what happens to kids. And so that's my, our first bullet is our Mary Lyon mission statement because I was fortunate enough to come, they'd done that work and really had embraced this inclusive practices and really thinking about the child both academically and their emotional growth. So I came with that to Lyon and I implemented PBS because I'm a former special ed teacher and I'm all about that and I implemented it. And I did it. Well, then the Tacoma Whole Child came along and we went as a team. And we, I mean, we were doing okay. But the power of when your staff own it and when your staff manage it and when your staff are the motivators behind that, it's all of us doing it now. So it's just like, oh, that's Anita's thing, she doesn't like to suspend kids. Isn't that, it's, I mean, because when I was doing it, implementing it from the top down, it was my thing they had to own. So the power of having us as a team go to the trainings with the Tacoma Whole Child, or as we kind of call it T-Wiki, and we're L-Wiki, that's why you see the L-Wiki on there, has really been the biggest change. We as a building own that and we make the adjustments to that and that's a living entity that we work on consistently. So we have a team that meets monthly and we problem-solve around all sorts of different things. One of the beginning of the school year, if you'd been there the first day, we do L-Wiki Boot Camp. So we make the assumption that a child does not know our expectations unless we teach them, show them, model them for them. And so we also make the assumption that the teachers aren't gonna put it as a priority in the classroom in those very busy first days if we don't all come together as a community and do that. So by 9:30, we're out at our stations and we're having the classes walk through and we do the model of how to teach a behavior that we learned at the Tacoma Whole Child trainings. And we walk through that with our team as the leaders and they walk through that with all the kids. We revisit that after every single three-day weekend break, you name it. The teachers go back with a ticket and do that exact same thing so that it's constantly being revisited. It's not leaving anybody behind, oh, we did that back in September and so I guess we're done now. It's constantly in front of them and being reminded of that, constantly pulling in new kids and showing them those expectations. So we look at those structures and try to find those. Within that same structure and that monthly meeting, we are constantly, we have our data in front of us and we're planning and taking a look at what's happening. Oh, I guess I have to push that button, not the one down here. There you go.
There you go.
Can't do it without friends. So our decrease, the orange is this is the last school year and the blue the previous year. And we've had a decrease overall in our office referrals, but we had some bumps. Just yes, this morning, we were talking about, okay, October's coming up. We seem to have been higher in October, even though last September was beautiful. We had like two referrals in September. What are we gonna do? And so we did some planning around what we need to do to bring forth those practices and remind kids about expectations, keep focused on the positive. And we had a little problem solving of what we're gonna work with at the staff meeting with staff around expectations and supports for kids. So we're looking at that each and every time we're getting together. Again, you'll notice that we also pull it out. My, my goal is to learn pivot tables, but my librarian's so good at it, I keep letting him do it. So we have pivot tables going to be able to sort that information out by ethnicity and we're looking to see what are, how are we doing? What does it look like? Who is being referred? What areas are they being referred to? We want time of day, but we can't get that off of our Performance Plus yet.
We'll get it for you.
Good, we're working on that one. So we, we're looking at all those different aspects. Is it playground? Is it music? Is it PE? Is it classroom? Where's it happening at? What could possibly be the things that are going on that are having more referrals? And so we take a look at those and then try to diagnose what's the problem? What's our response need to be? Yeah, you're falling down. Okay, I pushed it. Oh, there you go. So that's led us to really looking at the attitude that, that behavior is language. And especially, I think, at the elementary level, we don't make the assumption that a child is doing anything because they're willfully trying to get us or something. They're doing it because they're trying to communicate a need to us. Either that the instruction isn't engaging, that there's something not right in their life. They're hungry, they're cold, they're not feeling well, something's not right. And we have to be able to understand that. I'm learning to speak fives so much better because fives tell you a lot with their behavior. And, and we don't, we often don't know how to listen to that and pull apart the threads to tell us what's going on. And we've had some heart-wrenching stories where little people were telling us, it's not safe in my life and I need your help. And if we had just looked at the behavior at school, we would have said, this is a kid we need to send off to some behavior disorder program or a mental health service or something else. But when we take the time to really tease it apart and say, what's this behavior trying to communicate to us? Then we're able to partner with the family, partner with agencies to help the whole family and the whole child have their needs met. Our suspensions, my goal is to have, be at zero one day, I'm gonna have zero up there. But we use, when we have to suspend at our, at our school, it's because we need time as a team to make sure that we have a safe place for this child to return so that we can work through issues with them and teach them the behaviors that are gonna help them be successful. So we don't use it as that we have to teach the child a lesson. And that was a big restructuring for families and for parents, for parents and for staff. Because the old-school model of somebody's gotta learn a lesson about what they did doesn't, doesn't help the child move forward. If I suspend a child for one day because they have hurt someone on a playground, it pushed, hit something, I'm not helping them learn the strategies they need to be successful. If I have that child with me for a week, coaching them, playing with them, working with them and talk about what they can do to calm down, to give themselves a break, then the long-term for that child is more successful. So we had to reframe for the parents that we work with and for our staff that it's about helping the child, the child learn the skill set to be successful and not about ju, this sense of that justice has to be given out and somehow the child has to pay for this consequence. They don't have the script to be successful and our job is to give them those scripts so that they can be successful. So thanks to Greg. So thanks to Greg and the initiative. Yeah, and it's been great to be able to have that support for our team and to keep coming back to that support there. And I think you saw that in his data about the level of support that the teams fill, so.
Thank you. I think Dr. Garcia would love to make some comments.
Just real quickly, a couple of things. For those that are watching at home, is the Whole Child Framework is really, it is that. It's a framework. It's not to say that individual schools aren't doing marvelous things and they have been doing marvelous things. There's some key elements of that. One is just using data to action plan and having a framework and training and support to do that. It's braiding our initiatives. So what are those good things that we've been doing? Maybe what are those areas that we need extra help in? And putting those things together in an intentional plan. It's the ongoing support. It's really critical. What's unique about what's happened in Tacoma, and I want to make sure that everyone knows that everyone from the legal team to student life, to level directors, to security, to family, to staff, they're all involved in this conversation about we got to do better to support our kids. With that said, we're not there. We want you to see that we're moving in the right direction globally. We're moving in the right direction with certain subgroups, but we are not arrived and we're not going to stop. With that said, our ultimate goal is that kids don't make the same mistake. I got kicked out of school twice in one day. Twice in one day, right? Nobody was there to say, I can tell you a different story, right? But we have to start to look and recognize that our babies are going to make mistakes. And just like as parents, we would never suspend our kids. But we, we sometimes, we recognize that sometimes we have to hit pause. And what we're trying to do is build better systems for that, that kids can transition, that kids can have the support, and we feel good about where, the direction that we're heading. The final thing that I'd like to say, and sometimes our school folks don't know this is, everything you heard tonight started with you in 2012. Whole Child Framework around a benchmark around social-emotional learning. The individual plans, projects that were labeled Dr. Garcia projects, those were direct results of your benchmarks and limiting the disparities and what's the action plan and how is that funded by budgeting for priorities? And that's exactly what these guys were doing. And so sometimes folks at home may forget that. Sometimes folks in the building may not know that. That back in 2012, and you can go look at all those. Before that, there was a lot of heavy conversations about what is success? Laser-like focus. We will measure our results with laser-like focus. I think you can see that we're using data to get better at that. We will eliminate the disparity gaps. We have not eliminated the disparity gaps, but we're moving in the right direction. And if you start to see that match with what the direction or academic achievement, we have to stay focused on this. We can't develop a new plan. We have to get better at this plan and work this plan. And so I want to thank the board's leadership for setting that goal. I hope you can help spread that work to your colleagues to know that your board supports this work. And sometimes folks like myself have to do a better job of connecting those dots. So with that, thank you for having this important conversation. Make no mistake, this will not be the last time we have this conversation. This is not the last time we have this conversation with school staff and it's, it's the conversation that we're constantly having.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Kind of said what I wanted to say is that I'm, I think, overall pleased with the direction we're going in. Obviously, we have more work to do across the district. But it's like raising the graduation rates, which we've done. We still have, and I like to quote my favorite poet, Robert Frost, "We still have miles and miles to go." But we've accomplished the first half of the race or the first corner, wherever we are. And I think I want those of you out in the trenches to know that this board does support what you do strongly because you're doing what we've asked you to do. As Dr. Garcia said, back in 2012, when we went through the strategic plan, extended it out and established the benchmarks. Because I think the point I took up from this conversation tonight was that I, I'm sure that we are seeing, and I know in my own mind, and I haven't sat down and looked at the numbers, and most of you know I'm a numbers geek, but that there is a correlation between reduction in suspension and having kids knowing how to be, deal with their issues in a positive way and know that someone is there to help them in academic achievement. Because I don't think one goes without the other. Someday, maybe someone will help me write a research paper when I'm not sitting here and I get more, more white-haired than I am because I think that is what we, as a Tacoma School District, are showing. And believe me, we're getting national attention. Councilor and Boards of Education last summer, a year ago now, I presented on our Whole Child Initiative about where we were. And quite frankly, someone said, I think you are the only school district in the country that is doing this and benchmarking it. Others of us are doing little bits and pieces here and there and that you are tying it to your academics and, and growing not only well-educated people but socially and emotional success for our kids. So I, I'm not going to ask any specific questions tonight, but I am. I'll do that later. I'll let the board do. I just want to say on behalf of myself and my colleagues here, thank you for the hard work that you're doing and I want you to know that we up here truly do appreciate it. Know it's not easy. We're there to provide the support by through budgeting or whatever to you. And because I know sometimes when you're out in the, in the wilderness, so to speak, you don't realize that the five of us here feel that way sometimes too. So just so you know, you're not alone. Thank you very much. Director Hines, would you like to start? Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is this on? Yeah, good. There is no red light, so I couldn't tell you. Appreciate the presentation and also the representation of the data by demographic and subgroup. One additional piece, we got to it in the narrative that would be helpful when we display the data, is then the percent of suspension as it relates to the student population. So when Greg was telling us thirty percent of black students, when they represent twelve percent, gives us that additional layer of context. But providing that demographical data was the context that last week I was looking for. So I appreciate the responsiveness. It's very helpful and very well-done. On slide number nine, I had a question when we talk about behavior and the nature of behavior that led students to be suspended during the day but not at night with the AEP program? So I'm just trying to reconcile in my head. We remove them from school during the day, but we allowed them to go and be a part of a TPS program in a TPS building just in the evening.
So part of that's just the functionality of the school. So Willie Stewart Academy has a population of students, the culture, their own culture, and making sure that they have a supportive system. And so when we looked at alternatives in different times where we could, some of the times these students have, there's extra security necessary and needed to be provided. And so we really struggled with what is the best place to do that? How do we use this? What are the, what are the resources that we have available? And when we looked at piloting, we had to examine all those constraints and to say, so we want to try this. We want to see if it's working. We know that we can't just take kids and put them back into a setting and change the culture of another building without potentially impacting that culture. And so we looked at night as an opportunity to do that so that we could maximize staff as well and extend their day sometimes by paying them extra time for extra hours. We wanted to make sure that there was a connection as well to making sure the staff that were housing the students originally, the homeschool, had an opportunity to provide work in a meaningful way. And so sometimes if you say, you're at Lincoln High School as a teacher and you're saying, hey, I really need work for Josh over here and he's at Willie Stewart Academy during the same time, that sometime was difficult to do in the day. So it's not to say that this is the all, be-all, end-all, but those were some of the constraints that we had to work with.
Okay, that's logical. I appreciate that. Slide number ten, when we talk about students acting out in class and so we're teaching them how to behave, we're giving that defined behavior. I think back to when we had Dr. Emden at the Administrative Institute and he was talking about the Pentecostal pedagogy. How do we take that into consideration when we're defining behavior and we're teaching kids how to behave?
So one of the things with the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is we don't have a set of expectations that's universally applied across the district. Now, I want to be careful when I say that, is we believe that all kids should be respectful, safe, and responsible. Each school, each classroom, each grade-level team, each bus, each team has the responsibility to define that in their local context. What does it mean to be safe? What does it mean to be responsible? And so the definition of a bathroom at, let's just say, Lister Elementary, and what does that mean? What does it mean to be responsible, safe in the bathroom? May look different than it does at First Creek. And so the power of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is to take these universal principles across the city and bring local context. Because we really, up to those, that opening comment around, is it my definition of behave or is it our shared definition as our learning community of what behave looks like? And so that's the approach that we're taking to try to bring student voice into that conversation. And many of it are examples. You'll see signs where students say, this is what it looks like in my words. Or for early kids, this is what safe looks like by a drawing. Or how am I feeling today? And so they can bring their voice into that conversation.
And I guess, and I appreciate that. My question is more focused on student engagement, where behavior might be deemed disruptive because the student isn't sitting quietly with their hands folded at the desk and waiting to be called upon, but something that the teacher teaches, moves them to say something? Or, and is that you're being disruptive and you're going to be removed? So I'm, I'm just curious around what sort of professional development are we doing that if kids are responding, we want them to be engaged? Dr. Emden told the story when he went in and was doing research. I think he was in a classroom in Harlem or the Bronx and the teacher was up there teaching with his back to the classroom and he was teaching. He was powerful and every head was on the desk and disengaged, right? So is that, see where I'm going here? I'm wondering if, we want kids to be just as engaged and I, I just worry that sometimes we're saying be quiet. Being respectful and being well-behaved means walking quietly down the hall and whispering when, I mean, I've got elementary school students and they're expressive and they, they're full of energy. And so how do we, if we want them to find joy in the learning, but we drive the joy out of the learning because we're taking all of the emotion out of it because we're teaching them to be quiet and well-behaved versus expressive and engaged? How do you reconcile that?
So I'm going to ask the Mount Tahoma folks to send you their video about what it means to be a T-bird in the T-bird way and how students have started to bring their voice. And, and at first, some folks, I think, got a little nervous about that video because it was a, some would call it a rap video and they were nervous about, what do you mean, we're going to allow kids to rap this? And so it's one example of how students are starting to bring their voice. Levante mentioned about matching. Sometimes this is a personality. It's very difficult to be a classroom teacher with a hundred and fifty different personalities. It is extremely difficult. And so sometimes we have to, it's a matching system. This is harder than rocket science. Rocket science, you launch a rocket and if the wind blows one degree off, you shut down the whole rocket launch. We don't have that same luxury. Sometimes in school, Levante's having a bad day. We're going to close the school down. It's, and so it's, it's really difficult. But we are, I think, working with staff to open those doors up, trying to match students with the right person, personality. And some kids feel just the opposite. They feel very intimidated when somebody is very explosive and, and energetic. And it, it, I guess what I'm, I'm failing to say to you in a very articulate way is there's not one set action plan. The Tacoma Whole Child Initiative starts to look at the big five. When are incidents happening? What is it that they're happening? Where are they happening? So that we can examine those things and saying, so are kids arguing or are they passionately having a discussion? What were they discussing? And what was our response? Which opens the place for a conversation to say, why are we, why are we holding kids accountable if they're arguing about the SAT score that takes to get into WSU? Because nobody, everybody wants to go to WSU, right? Go Kooks.
Go Vikings.
It's the best five or six years of your life.
Thank you. So I, I guess, I, like I said, it's, it's a difficult, it's not a, it's, and that's one of the things that people struggle sometimes when we talk about the Tacoma Whole Child. It's not a lockstep program. What it is, is it's a framework. It's a, it's a very intentional, scientific-proven way to talk about how to build action plans based on real-time data to respond so that we can engage in those conversations in different ways. But there's not a set curriculum for that.
Okay, so I'll be interested to hear with, with the behavior because I know just my own kids now going through it.
Why don't you have Anita respond? I think she wants to.
Yeah, so, and Tammy probably is the same way.
And maybe.
It, it's very true that, that it's a framework for what's going on. And one of the things that we do, do get is that we get some presentations on strategies. And I have a big problem when I get a referral for disrespect because respect is about a relationship and it's a two-way. And so my first response to the teacher is, I can't teach respect for my office, for a child to respect you from my office because this kid and I have a great relationship and I've never been disrespected. So help me understand what that relationship looks like between the two of you. And oftentimes, we've been having teachers use the two-by-ten. So two minutes for ten days, having a positive conversation about things that kid likes, to engage in a relationship with them, to turn that page. So it's not about whatever the teacher has as their parameter of what respect is, but it's about the relationship and it starts to open that door to be able to have that conversation. So we do also, you know, get a chance to see strategies, videos, things modeled by the coaches and the, and the team of student life and UDeb that help us to, to turn that page for teachers and see that. Because that's, that's exactly right. If we don't, if we don't open that relationship and let kids show they're learning the way that is their style, we're not meeting their needs and we're not respecting them.
Yeah, so I guess I'm interested on the behavior side to see how this gets rolled out with fidelity and continuity district-wide because I'm hearing incidents where well-behaved means you're quiet in the classroom and you're quiet in the halls. And so then where do the kids let it out? So I'm an elementary school student and I'm well-behaved in the classroom. I'm sitting here being quiet and then as I'm passing in the halls, I'm expected to be quiet and when I'm sitting in the lunchroom, I'm expected to be quiet. But I'm a kid and I got a lot of energy and joy and exuberance that I want to get out. So how do we help them draw that out without being disrespectful? Systemically in every building?
So traditional education was about quiet classrooms, right? But now I think we've learned that passive learning isn't engaged learning. So we have our district high-yield strategies. Two of those strategies involve quality questioning to promote student talk. Talk is a number-one indicator of whether kids are learning or, or not. So at First Creek Middle School, we've been very intentional about professional development around those high-yield strategies as well as GLAD, which are very specific strategies to especially focus on academic language. Oh, I know. I knew you were going to ask me.
Guided language acquisition.
Thank you.
I thought that's what it was. Okay.
But it is around best practices that promote academic language. And often we think of academic language strategies addressing just students who are second-language learners, but really, in high-poverty schools, all our kids are lacking in academic language. And so those strategies are best practice for all kids. So you asked specifically around classroom instruction and professional development. So those are some of the ways that specifically some schools are addressing those things.
Okay, and that's great. And that's, and I love to hear specifically in some schools and my interest is in all schools. So that every kid's getting, because that's consistent with my bias on how we should be engaging students and that, to me, makes sense. And we, you got the anecdotal proof that it works. All of you sitting up here are seeing it. I just want to make certain in those buildings, maybe where it's not being implemented in that manner, how is, how is it being communicated to the administrators, to the parents? And then, and just the last question that I had is with the community. Because I hear Dr. Banner talking about aspirationally connecting through Safe Streets and other organizations to get it out to where kids and families gather and ultimately, can we get it in the homes? What about the people that don't have kids in the system? So how are we, there's this perception, I get it all the time, and my colleagues do too. We're so soft on kids these days. And back when I was in school and I'd go in the principal's office and they had the paddle. So when we start to talk about what we're doing with restorative justice, which I'm a big believer in, it, it's somehow soft. So we're explaining it methodologically to our families that are impacted by it, but the majority of the people in the community don't have kids in the system. So are we making a concerted effort to have this dialogue with them? So like Dr. Banner said, sixty percent of those kids are going to stay here and they're going to be better citizens, better human beings as a result of having been exposed to this? How are we getting that message out to the community?
So there's four shifts in the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. Shift one is the school. Shift two is the community partners. And Dr. Banner's office in collaboration with our student life works with shift two in making sure that all the after-school providers that we work with have a common language framework in there. Shift three is working with families. And so we started with parent liaisons and training parent liaisons that we have started to implement in our buildings with this idea that we will have more parent liaisons over the course of time. And then shift four is our neighborhoods. This is systematic, community-wide change. It's not going to happen overnight, but that's the framework. And so we'd be happy to spend some time, but to be honest with you, that's a whole nother set of conversations that we would have to go more in-depth. But that's the framework and how the training works in four shifts. So that this idea that we can... So that this idea that we connect the conversation at each place, starting with where kids are the most time, meaning the most in one controlled environment, controlled not in the sense of I've got control of you, but in the same time for 180 days as we extend the year. How do we extend the day for them and extend the year and what's that same conversation look like in training? Then into the families and then into the neighborhoods. It'll take some time.
Can I make a quick comment too? I think there's a, really, you know what this Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is about? It's really about changing us adults. You know what I mean? And I think that sometimes the perception is it's about, you know, telling kids what to do and, you know, walking in a straight line. Just the opposite. You know what it's about? It's about us building our emotional intelligence. It's about us treating all Tacoma youth with respect, treating them responsibly, treating them safely. And as we continue to permeate this out, you'll see more and more adults and we're seeing it inside the schools. We're going to see it with all our community partners, our folks in the neighborhood, including our law enforcement, families, parents, caregivers. Building emotional intelligence, learning how to treat youth with more respect. Because we can all get better at that, you know? And it's a lifelong process, but that's the, the idea here. It's more about changing us adults and improving our skill sets. And one important thing I want to point out too, we saw this with the first day in TPS, didn't we? With adults greeting kids. And our goal is for every kid, every Tacoma youth will have four positive touches. They will be bus drivers greet kids by name as they get on the bus. You know, it's good morning to see you, good morning Josh, good to see you this morning. Hey, you'll be safe and respected on the bus this morning, good to see you, right? The bus driver, when they get off that bus, staff greeting them. When they step foot in the door, administrators greeting them. And then teachers greeting kids at their, at the classroom door, four positive touches. And then to close the day, the same thing. That's unprecedented, that's the kind of support system, that's us changing our behavior, so.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. So I look forward to the day when we see that, you know, we're taking care of what we can control right now and we need the community to get on board. So I think using PIO and other means to get that out, because 70% of those adults don't have kids in school. So that, so for the 30%, that's great. For that other 70% out there in the community, I don't want them to be left out in the dark of all these great things that are going on. And for them to think about my engagement with this kid who I don't know, who I have a perception of, if we can somehow influence that through media and other ways to report out what's going on, I think that that will have, I think it'll help us expedite what we're trying to create. Because you've got the majority of these people out here that have no idea, because they don't have kids in the system. So their perception most likely is based on the last time they touched the school system, which may have been years and years ago with some old school practices. And they can't quite reconcile what it is we're trying to accomplish with these new, you know, these different ways of communicating with kids.
We only have like 15 minutes in our timeframe for the rest of your colleagues.
That was my last question.
Okay, great, thank you, Director Cobb.
I have a number of questions, so I'll try to be brief. The first one, well, first I want to, Anita, I want to just say thank you for your comments. All of your comments have been great, but the thing I'm really thankful for is how you outlined your assumptions. Because I think that's very powerful for students and for families to know what you do and don't assume about what they're coming with and what they have, so I appreciate that. And I really appreciate your reframing of what a suspension is all about. And it was going to be my first question tonight when I was thinking about these slides. It's like the state has pushed us in a way by saying that we can no longer deny students access to education when they're suspended or expelled. And we've piloted programs and we're expanding them next year to, in ways to address that. But when you go back to the traditional idea of what discipline responses look like, it makes me rethink the whole idea of what, what is a suspension for? What is the purpose of this thing? And I think we need a clear articulation of that, partly in the way that you have. And I think we've done, we're in the right, moving in the right direction, because we have it placed under safety as our goals. But I don't know that families, because we all grew up with suspensions and expulsions meaning one thing, so I don't know that families and parents of kids today understand it that same way. And I think that when you start framing it differently as a place to reset and I think it elevates the importance of reentry plans. And we didn't hear much about that, but I'd like to know more about that.
Maybe we could have a Friday report or something along that at some point.
What does that look like in light of how we've reframed it and how, what's parents' role in that? But my, just concrete questions are, with the Willie Stewart Academy being the site for middle school students in the academic extension program next year, how are we ensuring that they can get there? And is the school itself being modified? Not modified, but are any considerations given to the fact that it's going to be a program targeting middle school students rather than the high school students that are typically there?
Yeah, so one is we work with the families to see if it's a viable option for them in there. And so that's one of the pieces, is transportation. And that was also part of the consideration at night, when you have a situation where transportation may need to be provided. Public transportation and on a site where there's lines was also a critical factor of that. As far as modification goes, as far as the school program is, this, the Willie Stewart Academy staff has really taken lead on designing the program to allow students to have access. And so they've, they've thought of those, those contributing factors, as well as, they're the ones that have asked us to expand based on middle school principal feedback to say, let's start earlier. With this goal that if we start and if kids make a bad choice, which sometimes that's what comes down to it, is we haven't said that very much tonight, but sometimes this is not about the adults having a bad frame or anything, but sometimes kids make bad choices. That we, we find a way to intervene and support earlier, so that they don't continue to make those bad choices.
Okay, thank you. With suspension data, does any of it include bus suspensions, suspensions from buses, the data that we saw?
If they're suspended from school as a result of what happened on the bus, then the answer is yes.
Okay, but not just suspended from riding the bus?
Correct.
Okay, and then my last one is about slide 26. It's where we have questions for about, related to the Whole Child Initiative. And one of those items was district support. It went from 15 in the first year to 100 and every year after. And then looking at that in relationship to slide 29 and the outcomes for the district capacity assessment, just wonder how that was framed? Because to jump up from 15 to 100 and to stay at 100 seems like a big leap. So I just wanted to know a little bit about that one.
Yeah, so to begin the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, we established a representative district leadership team. And Dr. Garcia was on that team, Dr. Kabista and probably a few others in this room as well. But that is, that was one of the key ways in which that bumped up so much, that system score improved so much, is that we established a representative district leadership team and didn't silo the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative with one person, instead it's shared leadership, team-based implementation. So that was one of the main reasons why, and that's, it's a powerful thing. We've built a system here at the district level that we think is built to last, which is pretty powerful, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Wenske.
Okay, so we've had this, you know, no tolerance for fighting when I, quite a few years ago, where everybody was kicked out of school for a whole quarter or semester, in some schools, but not all schools. I was always against that, so it's really nice to see us moving in to this direction. And I read the article about Highline Schools in the paper Sunday, which I'm sure everybody here read. It's quite interesting. And I have talked to the superintendent about cautioning, you know, she was going to go around and talk to the district people about how this was working. So I hope that people in the district would be honest about what is working and what's not working. And if, you know, that our schools need to stay safe if there's somebody that's like out of control. So I hope that people feel like that in the building. So Kevin, I, you know, I'll just say that to you as a high school principal, because as children get older, the things that they do become a little more serious, so.
Yeah, and I, I think it's directly related to kind of what Anita was talking about, the fact that you have, we have to teach the kids what is appropriate over and over and over again. And the more that we do that, the more that they begin to behave as appropriately as possible. And I just, I just think the mind, the shift in attitude from punishment to doing what we can do to, to keep these kids in school, so that we can instruct them and help them learn both academically and socially and so forth, is going to make the big difference. And we won't have to feel like, a lot of folks may have felt in the past, that, you know, there are dangerous people in the school and no there aren't.
I really appreciate.
Frankly, I love teenagers myself.
Director Wenske, and I know we're short on time, but one of the biggest significant differences between that article and us is, yes, the superintendent went around to the high school staff and middle school staff and said, so what are you doing? There was never a message that you, you can't suspend students.
Right.
And I want to be clear about this, is sometimes students make bad choices and they need to be removed from the setting. And you can look at our suspension data and see that we're still suspending students. What we're doing is, is we're asking ourselves really difficult questions and saying, why are we suspending this student? What is the goal here? What is the purpose? What is the action? Did the, did the, what the student did warrant a suspension? What supports did we put in place for this student prior to suspension? What can we do and learn from this? And what supports can we put in place for reentry as well as, so that this doesn't happen again? And that's where I think we're seeing our successes with very thoughtful people that know the schools and saying, this is our plan at this school and how we support that. But we're not going to be a district, as far as I've heard from the superintendent or from the board, that says, we're not, we're not suspending students.
So I do read the New York Times Magazine every week and there's another big one this week, all on education in the magazine. And it talks a little about infantilizing high schools in some cases, which I agree with, that we treat our students like they're not the 18-year-olds that they are and ready to be on their own. So I really like what you're doing at First Creek about assigning teachers. And I just want to put in a plug, when my kids went to stadium, they got to choose their own teachers and walk around. And I just think that goes a long ways to making them have a little bit of a say. The computers are always wrong, they're always having like 1,700 or 2,000 kids in the wrong classes. And so I'm a big proponent, proponent of that. And another, I was talking to a girl who had an issue with discipline early on and I would really like to look at a way to take some of those things out of students' files, so it doesn't follow them forever. Because if they come to us with a student hearing, we can say, if you're clean for the next nine months, we will take it out of your file. If they don't come for a hearing, they don't have that option. So I would like to look into something like that for some of our really young students who misbehave maybe in their freshman year and then have something on their record. And thank you for everything, good report.
Thank you, Director Roscha.
I'll be brief. Years ago, when we first penned Every Student Every Day, we ironically did it at the same time, as we said, lots of data, laser-like focus. But we wanted to make sure that that data was never forgotten from that individual student every day. I think we all know that having the kind of authenticity to have the emotional intelligence to work with every student every day takes a lot of energy. And what I heard a lot of tonight is that you're all doing it. And I just want to really tell you that I appreciate it a lot, it moves me, it will change our whole city. And so it's important work and it means a lot. What I always want to say, when I hear that people, especially when we've put ridiculously high goals out there and you're meeting them and exceeding them frequently, even though we have a long way to go, is what else do you need? I don't want just your group to hear it, I want everybody in the district to hear it, because we're asking for a lot, I want to make sure that people know that if they need other resources, and I know that we're doing data on that and being reflective, but I want teachers on the ground to know that if there's something that they need, let us know. Don't assume that we're not going to figure it out, because we are here to support that work on the ground. Our work is at this table, but your work is the serious work that really changes lives. So I don't expect an answer to that now, but I hope that you will carry that forward and thank you.
Thank you. On the, on the suspension thing, I'm thinking back to when I was in school, you know, which was a long time ago. We had very few suspensions, actually. And if they were, they were usually, and we had kids that got in fights and did some of this stuff. And normally, one of my kids actually got one of these, hopefully he's not watching, was it was, both of them were told quite frankly by their principal, shut up and go home for a day and cool off, come back and we'll talk about this. Because I think they were like Dr. Garcia getting suspended twice in one day, they couldn't be quiet.
I know, that was a mistake when I said that.
Yes, you did that. It was just, they were just, and they were friends, but they just got at it. And the principal called both of us parents and they were juniors in high school and they were home for a day and it wasn't, didn't go on a record at that point, it was for them. They came back and it was over, geez, it was over a girl. You know how that thing works for teenage-type kids. So I think one of the things is that we, when we are now talking about suspensions, it's for very serious things. And, but there are, there needs to be also a way for kids to go maybe cool off, like my son and his friend did. And then they came back and couldn't even remember why they were in a fight, in a sense that, and this, I think, is the, is the beauty of what, Anita, you're doing and you guys are doing and all of you, that you're able to distinguish the major stuff now from what is typical kid behavior. I mean, we all grew up, we all did dumb stuff at one time or another. And I think Director Heinz, kind of what you were alluding to too. And, and I think we're making real headway with the Whole Child Initiative in being able to sort that out. One of the things that I've been impressed with, just my school visits last couple of years, has been the positive attitude towards kids in the schools. And one of the things that I learned during the time I spent out in, in our schools was that if kids know you think they're important, they will behave themselves. And one of my teachers that I worked with at Sheridan told me, you know, take your kid who never gets called on or, or never gets asked to be the helper or whatever, because he's always in trouble, make him your helper and you will never have a problem. And you know what? I did that. And I didn't realize how important that was till his teacher told me that she heard him saying, well, you know, when Mrs. V comes, I always get to be the helper. And I think that's something that, you know, is, doesn't take a lot of work. And it made that child feel like, you know, he was always in trouble, you know, and, and never for me. And it was a good tip. And I think that's what, if I'm wrong, but I think that's what, a lot of what we are doing and we try to make it sound more sophisticated and, and am I right, Tammy?
Absolutely.
Levante, is that what you're, and I think all of us here. And I just want to say again, thank you on behalf of the board and we look forward to more progress and moving forward. And I think, you know, when we look across our district, we have 30,000 kids and they all come from, they're all shapes and sizes, they all come, they come from different family backgrounds. And I think that's why the beauty of the Whole Child Initiative is its flexibility and ability to maintain a certain standard, but to let you over at Mary Lyon do what you need to do and Neil O'Brien over at Geiger do what he needs to do and so on. So thank you, we really do appreciate it and board, thank you. And we can, right, almost, I've got two minutes, we can adjourn early. Thank you, appreciate everybody.
Thank you, team, for another night out.
Thanks, you guys.